Good evening. I'm Tony Zimmer, the fundraising and community outreach chair of the West Orange Advocate Heritage Organization. I want to thank you so much for coming out to hear from the candidates who are running for council and mayor of this great city of West Orange, New Jersey. After hearing their platform, you will be able to decide which one is best or which one is qualified for the position that they're running for. Now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to our smart, gifted, talented, and dedicated president of the West Orange Advocate Heritage Organization, Mrs. Yvonne Nambiru. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. I think we need to think a little bit, you know, a little refreshing for the people who are going through this terrible storm down south. We want to make sure that they are well and they are safe, as we are in this safe sanctuary. Thank you again for coming out. In this forum, this debate forum, I had two other organizations in the city to come to collaborate so that we could meet the candidates, we could meet those people who wish to govern us, those people who we will speak to, those people who will listen to our issues and will help us to become still the great city that we are. And those collaborators are Mr. Felix Plata and Ms. Fanny. If you look around, it's the United Voices, the Hispanic Foundation, along with the African, with the West Orange African Heritage Organization. They will introduce themselves in a little while, but I want to make sure everybody is safe and comfortable and ready to grill our candidates. And I'm so happy that you're here. It's been a long road, but we've made it. So, Mrs. Fanny?
Hello, my friend.
Mrs. Felix? We have been working diligently to bring us together as we are tonight. Very glad, very proud to collaborate with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, we'll go on with our evening. I'd like to introduce our moderator. She has apprised our candidates of the rules and regulations of this debate. We want it to be a beautiful, successful debate. We want your questions to be answered, and we want them to have the time that they need in order to do that. So, I'm going to introduce to you Ms. Toni Zimmer. Toni lives in Sparktown Township in Sussex County. She's a trained and certified moderator for the League of Women Voters and has moderated debates throughout Jersey for many years. She is currently a member of the LWV of Sussex Highlands and served on the National Board of Directors from 2016 to 2022. Prior to that, Toni served two terms as state president of the League of Women Voters of New Jersey. I present to you Ms. Toni Zimmer.
Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm so happy to see so many of you out here. And it's wonderful to meet all of you and our hosts, for setting everything up so nicely. And I just want to say that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We don't support or endorse or oppose any candidates or political parties. So, for 100 years, we have been fighting to make sure that people have the right to vote, know how to vote, where to vote, and have ample information to find out who their candidates are, what they stand for, and how they may relate to them. So, tonight, we're going to have two separate events. The first will be an event for town council of West Orange, and the second will be, hopefully, if the candidates show up, the rest of them, so far we have two here, for mayor of West Orange. Now, in the front row, there are three league members who are the timekeepers. You can raise their hands there. And their job is to let the candidates know how many minutes they have left to answer their questions. So, each candidate has two minutes to make an opening statement, and then the questions that are being collected from the audience and also have been submitted by our hosts will be asked, and the candidates have one minute to answer each of those questions. The timekeepers will let them know in both cases when 30 minutes, 30 seconds are remaining by holding up the sign. And if the candidates just are so enthusiastic and they just keep going, then the stop sign comes up. So, hopefully, that won't happen, but if it does, it's okay. There are also rebuttals, meaning that if a candidate is listening to another candidate answer a question and they feel, hmm, I don't know about that, all right, they're instructed to raise their hand, I'll see it, and then after everyone has had a chance to answer that question, I'll go back to the person who has their hand raised and I'll say, do you have had a comment to make? And then they'll have 30 seconds to respond to that other candidate, only after each candidate has had a chance to answer the question. So, ah, yes, hold that up again, please, Louise. 15 seconds remaining for the rebuttal. The candidates will see that and they'll know that their time is very limited. So, what I'd like to do right now is I would like the candidates for town council to please come out and take their seats.
Each candidate will have a chance to come up to introduce themselves and make a statement before the questions arise.
Is this the opening statement?
The opening, your opening statement. You ready for your opening statement?
You can come here, or you... Excuse me. Okay, before the event started, the candidates drew lots to see who would be first, second, third, and fourth, to get their opening statements. And so, Ron, you will begin with your two-minute opening statement.
I'm running for town council because West Orange at this critical time needs an experienced leader who has a proven track record of helping West Orange community. Let me tell you a few things that I'm confident that I feel I'm the right choice as your next councilman. A few words come to mind: experienced leadership with a dedication to our community. I have for 37 years dedicated my life as a public servant in the public safety realm. During my career, I've successfully led the Essex County Department of Public Safety, the Union County Department of Corrections, and as president of the West Orange Board of Education. Under my leadership, I've reduced wasteful spending of taxpayers' money by 68% in county government. I have worked with our state and federal leaders to increase the state and federal lead that came to West Orange. I am an advocate for our diverse community. I've spent 25 years as a volunteer in our community, working with and as a member of organizations such as the West Orange PAL, Mountain Top, the West Orange Recreation Department, the West Orange Wrestling Club, and PTAs. I've worked together with the special needs community here in West Orange to bring the first municipal special needs playground, a community gem that is inclusive to everyone to enjoy. I started the Week Here for All Foundation with raises money for breast cancer, Autism Speaks, and host the annual toy drive for St. Jude's Children's Hospital. In county government and my tenure on the West Orange Board of Ed, I streamlined business practices in a more efficient, transparent manner. I initiated a business portal for public bids and contracts which promotes transparency and fairness. Grants that I had written have resulted in over $100 million in revenue for the county and for the town. I look forward to help provide my leadership, the same way I have to have as a councilman for your West Orange. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the African Heritage Association and the Hispanic Foundation and the United Voices of West Orange for this collaborative effort in uniting our community. Uniting our community has always been important to me, especially in the schools. I'm Susan Scarba. I'm a speech pathologist in the West Orange schools, and I have a record of advocating for special needs children and their families, as well as uniting our seniors and our students in intergenerational programming, like the teen techies and the senior storytellers. I grew up in our beautiful community with its gently rolling hills and mature landscape, and I want to keep it that way. I also loved that we have an economically and culturally diverse population, which I feel we need to nurture. Even though my business career took me to New York City, where I lived and owned and operated my business consulting firm, which serviced Wall Street, banks, and investment firms, I often returned here to West Orange to visit with family and friends, so it felt like I really never left. I always knew I wanted to raise my son here, and I did. Both of us went to Gregory School together. I'm running for town council because as an MBA, I've balanced budgets, I've negotiated contracts, I've managed large-scale products, and I can see that too often, politics prevail at the expense of the tax payers. And I want to make sure that the decisions we make in our community and the way we redevelop our township will unite our community and give us all the opportunity here to age in place among family and friends. I've always felt that age is as important as type of diversity as cultural and economic. It was my recent experience taking care of my father as a primary caregiver that really strengthened my resolve to do so and to make sure our seniors had what they need.
Thank you.
A little bit louder. Good evening, everyone. And thank you to the organizations for giving us this opportunity to speak with you and share with us the vision and goals. We are all gathered here today because we want what is best for our hometown. I am here to share with you my love and dedication to West Orange. Growing up here, I've learned so many things, but most importantly, I've learned the value of helping others, and this is something my parents have instilled in me from a very young age, where I've been taught to lead by action and example. Through hard work and commitment, I have been blessed to have many opportunities to make a difference and volunteer in our community. My grounding comes from my rich culture as an Ethiopian and Eritrean here, living each day with passion for life. I'm here with you today because I have raised my hand to be your representative within our township government. I'm a longtime resident, product of the school system from elementary school through high school, and now my nine-year-old son is attending the school system. And last year, I received my master's in public administration from Rutgers University, focusing on the leadership of public organizations. For the last seven years, I have served as a commissioner on the West Orange Human Relations Commission, promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm also a board member on the West Orange Rant Leveling Board. And as a public servant for the last eight years working for Essex County has been a huge step in helping me accomplish my mission of helping others in every way that I can. I understand how public administration operates, and I have knowledge and skills to lead in public governance. I believe I'm qualified to be your next councilperson because of my experience, love, and commitment for our town. I promise to put West Orange first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Michael Borby. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. I've been a resident of West Orange for the past 20-plus years. My background is in business. I've been a multiple business owner, owning everything from transportation, commercial, residential, real estate, daycare facilities, mental health clinic. I've been on the board and on the board of many organizations, some that impact this community directly, Mental Health Association on the board, secretary, been on that board over 10 years, Healthcare Foundation of the Orange, chairman of the Development Committee. I've been doing a lot of things, whether it's through the Salvation Army on that board. I come in with a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, and this is what I wanted to give to my community. I moved here from the city of North New Jersey, looking for a more comfortable place to live, to call home, and West Orange is where I found it. I enjoy the green spaces. I enjoy hiking. Every Sunday on, at the reservoir, a group of us, for the last three years, we've been coming together. Our mental wellness is very important. I'm also a big-time advocate for the mental health community. Not only am I an advocate, I'm a former consumer of mental health services. At the age of 20, I found myself suicidal. With therapy, with help, I was able to become an advocate. Years later, becoming this administrator in the mental health community, as well as being on the board of that mental health association. So, when you look at the mental health association, you look at the West Orange Police Department, we have been the pilot program for the state of New Jersey. Often when people like myself who sit on these boards who are impacting communities, we don't put our name before the organization, so many of you may not know me, but those who know the work of the organizations that I've been strongly a part of, you can appreciate the work. So, I'm happy to be here. I'm looking forward to getting to know many of you walking around the town, and I'm grateful for this organization, the African Heritage Organization, the United Asian Voices for hosting us tonight. I look forward to interacting tonight. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I just want to say that it's wonderful for early enthusiasm, but if we could hold the applause from this point forward until the end, because we want to ask them as many questions as possible. So, we're now going to start with the questions from our hosts and from members of the audience. And the first question is for Asmairet. And the question is, what are your plans for supporting new and existing minority-owned businesses?
So, we need to welcome minority businesses, small businesses, and women-owned businesses. And to do so, it's important that, I believe we need to hire a full-time economic development planner whose main objective is to promote economic growth townwide, and that's crucial. You know, we have a downtown alliance that helps businesses downtown, and we need to really have that throughout the township, right, for businesses that are in other areas and districts that aren't downtown. Thank you.
And Susan?
Yeah, I agree with Asmairet. I... Father? Father? I agree with Asmairet. I've been a longtime advocate for a town planner. I really believe that our township could be redeveloped to really encourage more business in general, and of course, it would be wonderful if we had a person with commercial real estate background and development background who can do that kind of work and could take on that goal of helping minority women-owned businesses.
Okay, Michael?
Yes, Chair of Commerce, West Orange just had a, not a summit, but they brought in an outside organization just last week who spoke to provide services, resources for minority-owned businesses, and it was held at the Rock Springs. And when I think about being an entrepreneur, an entrepreneur, multiple company owner, one of the challenges that I've seen in the community is that we can't afford to pay rents here if we're coming into the town, or if the property, the taxes are too high. So, as a small business owner, it's important that this community embraces small businesses by providing round tables so that the council can hear what the needs are from the small business community. Often you have people making decisions about business who don't have a background in it. So, it's important to give them the stage, give them the platform, and sure, I support the idea that Asmairet came up with, which is the planner. That's very important.
Thank you. Ron?
I think it's important that we look at the process and the support that the government municipality gives to minority, minority businesses. Help in marketing the business, I think we should upgrade. I think we should provide support. We also have to take a look at streamlining the process for permits and for licenses. Some of that, as you know, can be confusing, and the red tape, delays stuff, I think that government can do a better way of processing that, too. Also, I think that the bidding process through our government, right, that can be an open and fair process that'll welcome businesses and minority business owners to participate in government spending.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question, start with you, Susan. Okay, how do you plan to address food insecurity amongst West Orange residents?
That's a tough one. We do have some wonderful organizations that do, that do work with, with addressing food insecurity, and I think that we could make that an issue from a marketing point of view and let residents know that it really is a serious issue. It probably really touches a smaller amount of residents in our town, and many of us, I know because I work in the schools, but many of us don't realize how big a problem it is, and I think we could get the community together to work more on that issue with the food banks and the people that are doing it already.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yes, food insecurity has been something that's been circulating now, particularly in urban communities, and it is important that we do have education because the average resident, average person doesn't know about food insecurities or what that means. The New Jersey Food Bank is an organization that provides services, food, nutrients, to communities, and it's important that we partner, educate the public, and also get the council to get more involved with the community as it pertains to the issues that are impacting the residents.
This is a very serious one. The food banks in towns try to do a good job, but I think it's simply just not enough. When we look at the schools, there are a lot of children in our school district who receive no-fee lunch and early breakfasts, which is an indication of that. I think the government has to do a better job of reaching out to those people and providing the resources to better food banks, certainly on the state level, the county level, and I think that that's something that we as a community need to improve on because it is a very serious issue here in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Asmairet?
I also agree it's a very serious issue, especially after the pandemic, when a lot of people are struggling to put food on their tables. One of the things I'm proud about working at the county is we've hosted a lot of food drives, we have programs available to those who are struggling, and I think here in township, we should partner with organizations, religious institutions, and to host more food drives and canned good drives, especially on the holidays when people are struggling and can't afford to buy, you know, turkeys and whatnot. I also think that it's important that we work with other governments, right, county level, state level, to look for grants, talk to our congressional and senate reps to see what help we can get for those fighting food insecurities.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we're going to start... Oh, excuse me.
One of the things I want to add, I'm on the board at Salvation Army, and every Christmas or during the holidays, Thanksgiving, we have the Red Kettle Drive, and I'm often at the West Orange Shopper for hours for two whole days. And one of the interesting things, we want people to support it, but they provide food services for communities as well. So, it's important to support other organizations in your town that are doing some remarkable things to try to end these crises that many of the residents, well, some of the residents are facing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael? What are your plans for engaging and supporting West Orange seniors and teenagers?
The senior and teenage population, though different, are very vital to the success. One, you have a history of people who have contributed and given a lot of education, knowledge, and experience. Then you have the other, on the other side, you have the youth who need the tutelage and they need the teaching. My plan for the seniors and the youth is to start engaging them a little more directly. I think the only time it seems as if many of the engagements that happen only happen around political times, people are looking to get your support so they go to the nursing home, or they have these drives over here. But I think it's important that year-long, we engage the senior community.
Okay, thank you very much. Ron?
I am very supportive of programs, both for teenagers and seniors. Teenagers who do not play sports in town, we do a good job of sports programs, however, teenagers who do not have the sports programs have very little to do. And that's why when I was on the Board of Education, I started what was called the Digital Music Club, and it started, it talked about music production, music business, music laws, for children who did not want to play sports but had a different avenue to spend some of their time. I am very supportive of creating a community center, a senior, senior center. I grew up in Belleville, and Belleville has two senior citizens buildings. I have to see something of that nature here in West Orange.
Thank you. Asmairet?
So, in high school, I was elected to the student body where I was very active and worked with the administration there and students, where we hosted a holiday gathering with the seniors, and we would spend time with them. We would decorate gingerbread homes, play bingo, and I think it's really important to engage our seniors with the youth. So, my, my goals would be to continue that within all the schools, and also it's my hope that in partnership with the administration and the Board of Ed, that we can host a senior day here in town, similar to what we do at the county. On the county level, I help implement the wellness, senior wellness day that we do annually, and it's actually coming up this October 18th from 10 to 2:00. So, we need to have programs like, you know, that we do similar at the county.
Thank you, Susan.
We've actually been working on this. I put a program in place in the schools with Rosary Morelli called the Senior Storytellers. It was an incredible program where I taught the children interviewing skills. She brought in a number of affluent seniors who are prominent in our community, who are doing interesting things, and they learned so much from these seniors. They, they learned about history. Rosary taught them about how she became a volunteer in her community as a result of her growing up in the Depression, when everyone was needy, and no matter what race, or color, or age, or economic situation, everyone bammed together, and I believe this is a way to unite our community. I'd like to turn the Toby Katz Center into an intergenerational community center for seniors and students. I think it's a perfect place since we already have the playground there, and I think if we had a senior citizens advisory board, we could get more of these programs into the schools where I think it all begins.
Okay, thank you. So, this next question is going to just focus on education and our youth. So, Ron, we'll start with you on this one. As a result of the pandemic, what types of programs for youth could we put into action to get them back on track again?
So, when speaking with the professional educators, there's definitely a falloff of education that has happened due to the COVID pandemic. That's, I guess, everyone across the board agrees that. I think we have to engage the children both on a supportive level, as far as providing resources after school, maybe on weekends, we can do that. I think we have to involve community organizations, houses of worship who are willing to come in and act as tutors, or open their, their buildings for some resource, and I think we have to tap the county and state And I think we have to tap the county and state government for more financial aid to support those programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Asma Red?
I echo Ron's sentiments. You know, the youth really struggled after the pandemic, especially mental health-wise. I think we need to offer more mental health services. It's something that a lot of people struggle, especially within our community. I know I lost my brother this December to mental health. And we need to just engage our youth, get the community active, have more events for them, and consult experts to see what we can do. And again, I echo Ron's sentiments with working with the different various forms of government to see what kind of funding that there is.
Thank you. Susan?
Center which would be intergenerational, could really unite our community around this because I saw firsthand the love these children had for these seniors that they didn't even know. And I also have worked in the schools and have students who, you know, maybe not, were not the best students, but they were really wonderful, decent children who really just needed mentors. And I would like to see our police force and our firefighters and our entire community get together with the seniors and mentor some of these children because that's all they need is a little love.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I tend to echo Asma Red's sentiments as well as Ron's. Bringing together funding and the mental health community. I was just doing research on schools and what is needed considering COVID. Many kids are without their parents, their loved one, as a result of COVID. So the day that we're living in is a different day and different time. And so to believe that our approach can be so simplistic is really missing the point. There's so many historic things that have to go into account when you're addressing mental health and mental wellness. Weekly, if friends and I, we meet up at the reservation. We push hard. We want to talk about mental wellness, and that needs to be a part of the curriculum of schools. Mental wellness needs to be a part, and I'm gonna say it again, mental wellness need to be a part of the school system. I'm a survivor of suicide at 20 years old because someone saw that opportunity to touch my life, to turn me around. I'm here today at the age of 56. So education, resources in the school for mental health and mental wellness.
Thank you. Okay, Asma Red, his question to you. Support individuals with disabilities in our West Orange community, youth and adults?
So again, we'd have to consult with the groups that are experts in ways that we can implement legislation, making sure buildings are up to code and ADA compliant. In terms of activities, hosting maybe an event, bringing everyone together with community, and getting the schools involved. So yes.
Susan?
Yeah, I agree. It all begins in the schools and in the community. And unfortunately, in our community, we don't have enough community resources or places where people can go and really get together, where our kids can interact with our seniors. We're going to be building our seniors playground right now, right by the park, next to the high school. I've had the Mountaineer mentors actually work and do their community service work with the seniors, teaching them tech. I think if we had a spot where we can have more community events and get people from all different walks of life together, I think it would increase not only our understanding of each other's cultures, but also would bring us together to solve problems.
Michael? Sure. How do you plan to support individuals with disabilities in our West Orange community, youth and adults?
West Orange is a very unique town. Proud to be a resident here. It's a very multi-culturally diverse town, and there are so many resources. So cultural considerations are very important when dealing with people with developmental issues, when dealing with mental health challenges, dealing with physical issues. And it's important that we provide that platform, that we engage it from a holistic perspective.
Ron?
I think there's a two-pronged approach to that. One, we have to ensure that our facilities are ADA compliant and meet the requirements for the state and federal guides. Second, I think we have to engage and open up to the community and speak to them. That was the driving force on why I started the Inclusive Playground for Special Needs, which is a gem of our community up at O'Connor Park. That was a partnership done with the special needs community in town, myself and the administration. And it's something that's underutilized, and I would like to see those types of resources expanded.
Thank you. Okay, Susan, this one is for you. Ensuring that proper processes will be followed, such as bidding of contracts and providing residents with complete information and rationale about administrative decision-making?
This is one I've been talking about for years. I really think we need more transparency and accountability in our government. And unfortunately, you know, I've been attending town council meetings for years, and even when I was a caregiver for my dad and I couldn't get out of the house, he and I were watching the council meetings together on TV. And I, it's just so many times when the council comes up with their information and they say they've just gotten it. I think it's imperative that every project be bid out and we get three bids for any kind of reasonable dollar amount. And if I were on the council, I would vote no if projects were not competitively bid.
Michael? Sure. What commitment do you intend to make toward ensuring that proper processes will be followed, such as bidding of contracts and providing residents with complete information and rationale about administrative decision-making?
I've heard many, over the past year, transparency is a narrative that is circulating. I think a large part of it deals with conflict of interest. And when people are not clear with what the conflicts are, or those conflicts that are present, be addressed or either eradicated, then you start seeing more transparency when it comes to this government platform. But conflict of interest is one of the major things that everyone is skirting over, or they just don't see it.
Okay, Ron?
Transparency seems to be a big word around government the last couple of years. I want to talk real quick about what I initiated when I was on the Board of Ed. There was no bidding process, no bidding portal for business at the Board of Ed. We started that on the Board of Ed. On the county level, we have a website that's very transparent. Every bidder, every price that a person bids on is right there for the public to see. Every time there's a contract awarded, you can research who has won that bid over the last couple of years. As a government, we want the best price and the best service, and that doesn't matter from selected companies, whether they're big companies or small companies. But I think having that portal, that business portal, is important because it lends a sense of fair play among the townspeople. Thank you.
Okay. Susan, you wanted to, Asma Red, you have to answer first, and then we'll go back. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's your turn to answer the question.
So I support an open bid process. It's very important, as Ron stated. We both work for the county, so we have an open bid process. It's fair. You go on the website, you create a profile, you can see every project that's available, and you bid it. Transparency is key. I also believe that we should be giving projects to local, small businesses first, minority and women-owned businesses first, and then if, see who bids. And if we don't have enough bidders, then you open it up to everyone else.
Okay, Susan, you wanted to read that?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Mike. This has been an issue of mine for a long time each time I've campaigned. And I am not taking any money from anyone, not a resident or not any commercial businesses, because I believe money is the root of all evils in politics. And I believe we should follow the money, and contractors who do business with our community should not be bidding on projects.
Okay, Michael, you wanted to say something?
Yes, my rebuttal was conflict of interest. I say it again, conflict of interest, but as Ron spoke about the open bid process. The challenge I have when we say these things and we're talking conflict of interest, do the residents who are representative of the community perform the work in the community? Are those ethnicities the ones getting the contracts? So when we talk about open bids, who has access to open bids? Are you educating the small business community to let them know where the portals are, how to get to them? Are you opening the door for, I remember myself trying to get into, get some county bids years ago. It was such a challenge. But, you know, I just believe, you know, when we talk about open bids, we have to be real clear who's actually getting that information to the community.
Okay, we'll start with you, Michael, for the next question as well. What do you believe are the issues that are important to each of our communities?
Well, the beautiful thing canvassing the neighborhood, I got to speak to the Jewish community, and I think that one was the most surprising for me because I heard that their concern was having a kosher supermarket. And for me, I just would never have thought that. I go to other communities, I hear.
Excuse me, please turn off your electronic devices. Okay, we'll give you a few seconds. Okay.
Do I get my time back? I claimed my time.
Okay, Michael, please continue.
Okay, so what's important to one community may be different than others. But what I found important to all is that people just want to have just a sense of community, of family, a place that's safe, a place to raise their family, their children, place to call home. I found that the Jewish, as I mentioned, community wanted the supermarket. I found other communities were more involved with more culturally diverse intent. You know, West Orange is a beautiful town, but yet it's so divided. Ethnicities are here, here, but how do we bring those things together? That was another concern that I got from the residents.
Okay, Ron?
As I've been campaigning, I've been hearing different things, like Mike said, in different parts of the town. But what seems to be echoing or umbrella policy is that public safety. Everyone wants to feel safe in their home and to their property. Second thing is the recreation services that we spoke about earlier for teenagers. Also, increase minority home businesses. That seems to be coming up, and I think something that needs to be supportive, and the new town council needs to look at supporting those as well. And of course, stabilizing taxes. What can we do to stabilize taxes? Are there shared services out there that we can seek? Are there grant opportunities that we can earn or get that will stabilize the taxes?
Thank you. Asma Red?
So these last few months, I've been walking around, speaking to residents while canvassing, and the important issues that come up are quality of life, the services that we offer here in town, like garbage pickup, paving the roads, upgrading parks. Something else that also comes up is public safety. Schools also come up. And another, let's see, schools, public safety. And downtown, people often talk about our downtown. That's a main issue, right? Because people always talk about going to Montclair, other neighboring towns, and they want us to have a downtown. Parking is a huge issue, and people often talk about hiring a full-time planner or economic developer. There are quite a few issues that do come up as I'm speaking to people. So hopefully, we'll be able to address them together, working with the township, administration, and other government agencies for funding.
The redevelopment of our town and the downtown and the way we've redeveloped or not redeveloped our town has been an issue for many of the residents that I speak with. I hope to educate our residents that the way we redevelop our township not only determines the amount of taxes that we pay, but also has a profound effect on the quality of our life, as we're talking about here today. The lack of community programs and places for our youth to go and our seniors to get to know one another and learn about each other's cultures, I think really impacts our understanding of one another. And as we've, if anybody's on Facebook and you see the conjecture of what, you know, been going on, you can see that there is a real lack of understanding. And we need to just get to know each other better and need opportunities to do that.
Thank you. Okay, Ron, I'm gonna start with you this time. Position on housing development. Is there too much housing being developed and not enough businesses to offset the potential property taxes this housing has caused to create?
Great question. I think we have to concentrate on good economic development and stay away from the residential. The residential buildings will have an impact not only on our schools, on our services, the commercial ratables we need to bring back into West Orange. And that's part of what I talked about, about the stabilizing of the taxes. I think, I don't want to get into being overbuilt as far as residential. I think the way to go is smart commercial property. Thank you.
Asma Red?
So every project stands out on its own. I'd have to look at the project, review the specs, see if it financially makes sense for our township, and if it doesn't, I won't vote for it. We should not consider any project unless there's a public amenity and affordable housing. Thank you.
Susan?
I am very concerned about the overdevelopment of residential properties because I work in our schools and I see that our schools are overcrowded. Mr. Rutske did a study years ago when he was a superintendent, and the outcome of the study was that our schools are not overcrowded. Well, all you need to do is go into them and take a look at them, or ask any teacher, and they are very overcrowded. So the residential development has to stop. We need to look for a town planner who has commercial real estate development experience, who can attract some businesses to our township, and we need to do a much better job.
Michael?
Yes, I echo those sentiments, Susan. One of the issues that I think we all face in this town, we make false comparison to other towns. West Orange is different in structure and layout, so not having a full-time planner is part of the problem and why we're facing these same concerns. Taxes are issues when we talk about the tax burden, when we talk about who pays the tax, whether it's the developers getting these 30-year tax abatements or whatever. You know, I think having a planner, a professional planner, full-time planner, to lay out what it looks like, to have these projects develop is the start. But I'm not in support of overdevelopment at all.
Okay, thank you. Asma Red, this next question is, start with you. How do you practice or would you practice diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Well, for seven years now, I've been a commissioner, the Human Relations Commission, where we promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we help co-sponsor and plan a lot of the diverse cultural events in town. So when you ask me that question, I feel like, you know, I go to most of these events, I help plan them, and I think we need to continue this. And diversity is not just color, it's also age, right? It's gender equality, socioeconomic status, physical attributes, and so forth. So I feel like I promote it, and I've been doing so, and I will continue to do so.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I'm on the diversity committee in our schools, and I think that's a place where it starts. I think understanding and education starts with the children. I also really feel, given my experience with my dad as a primary caregiver after his stroke, it really deepened my understanding and my resolve to ensure that we do a better job to give our seniors a voice and a community center where they can socialize and fully participate in our community. And I think if they did that, there would be an understanding of the various cultures in our community that we don't really understand today. When I went to a flag raising the Hispanic Heritage, I couldn't believe there were 50 different flags represented from 50 Latin American countries. If we had our seniors center, wouldn't it be wonderful to have some events there to share our cultures?
Okay, thank you. Michael?
I think when we talk about diversity and inclusion, and we're talking about West Orange, we're talking about the council, we're talking about the structure, I would look at the administration because when I walk in town hall, it doesn't seem to be diverse. Neither does it seem to be inclusive. And so when I look at it from that perspective, I think it starts there. And all this pretty language about diversity and inclusion needs to be applicable and seen in the leadership of this town. And when we don't see it in the leadership, it's hard to continue to talk about something when we're not seeing the results of it. And so diversity, inclusion have to be part of the curriculum that we teach. And so diversity, inclusion have to be part of the curriculum that we teach sure in schools, but it also has to be applied so that those students and kids coming up would see it in the leadership of this town.
Okay, Ron.
I, I believe we can support inclusion and diversion in a couple of prongs. One, I agree that it starts at the schools with the children. Also, I think it's important too that when we make an appointment or appointments to positions or to boards, that that reflects our community as well. Hiring qualified candidates is important, and it needs to reflect the community, which I believe. I also think that some of the events that the HRC does, as far as the flag raisings and the cultural nights that happen in the schools, are more ways that our diversity and inclusion can be celebrated. Thank you.
Yes.
As a man of color, I've, I've been very involved throughout my life, my father, civil rights, and the movement. And today, we're speaking about diversity and inclusion, but we still need to see the results. And if we're talking about West Orange, I need to see it in the leadership of West Orange. I need to see it in the leadership of the county. I need to see it throughout the state, diversity and inclusion to be representative. So then when you start talking about contract, who gets the contracts? Is it reflective of the people in that community? Who gets this? You have to, when you're talking diversity and inclusion, it has to be more than these little sweet languages. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not a person from this town, and I'm not allowed to vote here naturally. So I also am not aware of everything that goes on in town and news. But I'm just going to read this, and you know the facts. It may be a hypothetical, but I'll read the question. With the incident of a shooting on Main Street and a robbery at gunpoint in one of our restaurants, what are your plans to increase our public safety department and/or hire more protection for the citizens of West Orange? Susan.
Yeah, I have worked with Chief Abbott and Angels. I was part of the drug program that he started years ago in the community for us to counsel and support those who were addicted to drugs and intercede before they actually worked with the police. And I believe the police don't get the respect and that they deserve, and they don't get the support that they deserve. They're wonderful human beings. In other towns, you know, they hang out waiting to give you tickets. Here, our police, our police really do serve and protect, and so do our firefighters. I experienced that with my dad. I had them at my house probably seven or eight times over the course of, you know, four years. And they were just the most decent human beings every time. One of them even said to me, you know, "This man would not be alive if it were not for you." Just the humanity and the depth and the breadth of experience they have, I think we can't let them walk, and we have to do better than the way we treated them during COVID.
Okay, Michael.
I believe it's very important to support through resources, not just through promotions and financial gains, but resources. Bring resources, education to our local law enforcement, our first responders. They really need our support. I remember moving here from an urban environment, and coming here was a way to escape that in some way. When I came here in the first year, in my driveway, they were trying to steal my car. I said, "That doesn't happen in West Orange." But it did happen. But I understand why it happens. It's because my house isn't too far from the entrance ramp, 1 to 280 East. And so certain areas of the community are impacted more. So having the police presence, which we do have now, it will lower or reduce people's tendency to do certain crimes, but it won't stop. But having police force with the resources needed so that they can do the job is important.
Thank you. Ron.
And thank you. Safety is a fundamental need for, for people in general and society. I think we have to ensure that the police and the first responders are properly staffed with the amount of officers and firefighters that meet national standards. That's number one. Number two, we have to ensure that they're receiving the proper resources and support. The council currently did not vote on a capital project, a capital budget. That's gonna hurt our resources for the next coming year. If we need fire trucks, if we need police vehicles, we have to support the police not only openly, but in the budget and the financial terms as well.
Azmaire.
So we need to look, work with our local law enforcement, police chiefs, the prosecutors in Essex County, the state, more patrols, education and training is key, and public safety is key. And we need to see if there's funding to help with these resources. We need to consult experts and work with grant writers.
Okay, thank you. This next question is for Michael. If you received $1 million, a grant, to use for the city any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Given a million dollars, I would take the first plane, no. A million dollars really isn't a lot of money, but it is something to start with. If I had to think about one area, I always have to think about the future. So I would think of something dealing in education for our children. I have to say that that'd be the direction that I lead. I would, actually, I'd bring together a team within the town to have discussions to see what's the best way to utilize those fundings.
So, that's a great question as well. I think we need to increase the money that is going to our parks and recreation. I was at Stag Field the other day, and some of the equipment was broken there. There were wood chips there. I don't know of any playground that uses wood chips in the last 10 or 15 years. So I, I, you know, I think that certainly we can upgrade, upgrade some of those things, equipment, rubberized tracks. I would like to see a development too around Crystal Lake, very similar to what the county did to the reservoir, to turn that into a walking park as well. So it's something that the recreation space is important to me, and I would, though a million dollars, as Mike said, is not really enough to do all that, but I think it'd be a good start.
Azmaire, how would you allocate your million?
So I echo Ron's sentiments. Growing up here, I went to St. Cloud and attended Stag, I would go to Stag Field and play. And we do need to upgrade. A lot of the equipment is old, it's broken. My, I have a nine-year-old son that goes to St. Cloud, and he goes and plays there. And he's also on the travel soccer team in town. So with that million dollars, I would pledge to create a turf field for our kids and sports teams because oftentimes, his games, his, not his games, his practices canceled because the high schools are playing, and we only have that one turf field at the high school. So I think it's important for our sports community, and it's important for our kids. I'm all for parks and recreation.
Thank you. Susan.
Yeah, I have to agree. I would, I would give a portion of it. Our, our recreation facilities are not up to par, but we do have some money in the budget now that we haven't had in the past to do some, some different things with the, with the parks. It's not enough. I'd siphon off a small portion of it for recreation in parks, but most of it would go to the intergenerational community center for seniors and families at Toby Katz.
Okay, thank you. Ron, what do you think the primary role of the township council is?
So our form of government, it is mayor, senator, which means the mayor does the hiring, sets the department heads. The town council is the legislative branch. They pass the budget that's submitted by the, by the mayor. They pass ordinances. So it's in that, in that role that I see the town council in our form of government. Now, there are other forms of government where the town council has some executive powers as well, but in our current form, we're more of the legislative branch, creating ordinances, passing the budget, and things like that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Azmaire.
I also echo Ron's sentiments. The town council is a legislative branch in government here. And it is our duty to be accessible to the residents, to hear their concerns, to help make the township the best township that it can be, and, and come up with solutions to issues. And work and partner with organizations in towns, religious institutions. And really, teamwork makes the dream work, and we're here, you know, to work together.
Thank you. Susan.
Yeah, I believe the town council is, again, a legislative branch. It's an outreach to the community, and it should be the voice of the community. It should not be what it too often tends to be here, is a rubber stamping of the mayor's agenda. I believe that the voices of the public need to be heard and need to be respected and synthesized and understood and taken seriously.
Mike.
It's easy to repeat what everyone said because I agree, but I try to go a different angle to speak to more the active role. I think looking at agendas that come before the council, I think it has to be a clear understanding to see how a vote over here would impact this group over here. And so even though we could all say that the role of the council is legislative, passing budget, ordinances, I think they ought to make, make it a point to be knowledgeable to these decisions they're making here and how it negatively impacts others. I think more communication needs to be done from the council perspective in articulating why they vote a certain way.
Yes.
I have to really agree with Mike. I believe we need business voices on the council because our town needs a business plan. And the people who sit on the council need to have, be strategic in their thinking and need to understand that plan and what, how it will affect different communities here in West Orange.
Okay, thank you. Azmaire. Mention a strength that qualifies you for this position. Just one strength.
Good listener. I said a good listener?
Oh, okay. I need to honer. Susan.
Financial common sense.
I didn't hear.
Integrity.
Okay. Mike?
Experience.
And Ron?
Experience and consensus builder.
All right. Susan, what is your position on term limits? And you can elaborate.
You know, I go, I go back and forth, but I, but I tend to think that, particularly here in West Orange, we need term limits. You know, once, we all know that money corrupts politics, both nationally and locally. And, you know, once an administration gets in, whether it be in the federal government or here, they get very powerful, they have a lot of money, and they tend to control a lot of things, and it makes it very difficult for the average citizen who wants to serve on their, on their council to be able to do that. So I think we really do need term limits.
Michael.
I am for term limits. I've always been for term limits. I think it's sad when people take the public's trust and they use it as an opportunity to enlarge their, their chest. I've always been in support of term limits. Absolute power, what, what it does when you don't have it is what we're seeing when absolute power corrupts. And so term limits would eradicate that level of corruption. But we need to give other people opportunities. No one needs to die in office. You know, where's the succession plan? I mean, people are literally dying in office, you know? Something's wrong with that. So term limits, I'm, I'm in supportive.
Ron.
I am supportive as well for term limits. I think that new ideas, new fresh ideas and new energy infuses good governance, which I think is important.
Okay, I think we have, I think we have time for one more question before we go for the closings. Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. Excuse me! You had your hand raised?
Yeah, I didn't answer yet. So I also agree with the three other candidates, and I do believe in term limits as well. Brings new, fresh voices and ideas, as Ron stated, to the, to government, and I think it's important.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have time for one more question before we go to the closing statements.
Our, our commercial district particularly, which is deemed the downtown area, needs to have a str, it has to go back to the town planner. Having an experienced town planner is very important. So we really need to start looking for someone with the experience or the team with the experience to give us ideas. When you don't have business community on any type of major decision-making that requires business, you're gonna get what you have. So when you're trying to look at developing towns like you see Bloomfield doing and South Orange and Montclair, they have the people. We don't have it because we, we've taken these part-time positions, and so we get the part-time results.
Ron.
I agree that the town planner is, is central focus and paramount here. Creating the vision for downtown, creating the commercial destination spot in West Orange i- is critical. I think the input from the businesses on the downtown corridor is also important, and providing resources and supporting that as well. And not just resources in the fact of marketing, but also the commercial stuff as far as having the town cut through the red tape as far as, for any building permits or any expansion stuff. That's some of the things I'm hearing as I, as I campaign. But I, but I agree with Michael. The town planner is important. His vision or her vision for the town and the support of the community is vital.
Thank you. Azmaire.
As I mentioned before, an economic development planner, a town planner that's full-time is crucial to our downtown. I'm not an expert. I'd have to consult the expert. I think this person could do so, inform the council, the administration, and what's best suited for downtown to help bring economic development.
Thank you. Susan.
I agree, it's time for a professional. We need a town planner with commercial real estate development business experience. We've been talking about this for a very long time. I mean, if you look, talk to anybody downtown, they'll tell you none of the businesses could survive because there's no parking. So we have to look at the way we develop, redevelop our township very strategically. And we have to understand that and address those things before we can attract business to our downtown.
Thank you. Yes.
And I just wanna add to that, Susan hit on a point. We've been doing this for a long time, talking about downtown Main Street, and we, we keep having the same results. And I think a large part of that is because we don't, it's, it's like when we talk about diversity and inclusion. We talk about it, but yet town hall doesn't reflect it. We talk about the business community, but our council don't reflect it. And so to have any type of action done in the area of developing this idea of downtown, you need to have the business community at the table. So you need a roundtable to have a discussion with the business community and the town planner.
I, I agree with Mike. The time for planning, we've done that for years now, probably decades. Now we have to start taking action and moving forward with, with some of that that the professionals are saying is the best way to develop downtown. I think the time is over for the planning. It's in the budget, let's move forward and see our vision come to reality.
Go ahead.
No, when Ron said, I agree with Mike. I, I just had a little joke. You ever see when Harry been Sally? I'll have what he said. That's all.
All right, as I mentioned, that was the last question. So we're now going to go into the closing statements. And I just wanna let everyone know that after the closing statements are done, please hold your applause until the last person finishes. And after that, let's have a brief break, and then we'll set up for the mayor's forum, okay? They'll stay, yeah.
So first and foremost, to the African Heritage, African Heritage Organization and the United Asian Voices, I wanna thank you for having us here. To our wonderful host and moderator, thank you. To all of you who are here, thank you for taking of your time. It's important that you lead and vote with leadership, lead and vote with experience. You've heard all of us and all of us are qualified to represent the town. We all have passions from different perspectives. But what is missing and what you heard tonight was a lack of business expertise at the tables when making business decisions for a town. And so if that's the narrative we want to continue moving in, we can. But if we're really about the business, we have to put people who have the experience in office to make the difference. I've been Democrat all my life. But once Mike Barbie decides to run for office, he becomes independent because the machine or the institution, administration doesn't want to support that or push that agenda forward. But that's okay with me. I'm used to coming up from the bottom. So I'm thanking all of you for coming out. I hope you understand who sit before you. You have a guy who at 20 years old was a suicide survivor, had mental health counseling, who has built a life, built business success. You could read about me. I write books. I have movies out. I've done a lot to help people. Being on the boards of these organizations, giving back to the community is something that's just part of who I am. And so that's why I solicit to all of you, give me the opportunity to represent you. I will represent you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
You could clap.
Okay, Asma Red?
This is your home, this is my home, and this is the home of our kids. It is up to us to continue shaping and supporting our future. It is up to us to continue nurturing and fostering our diverse community. With the pandemic, it has been clearer than ever before that to thrive, grow and enjoy the little things in life, we need to focus on our quality of life. Over the past few months, I've been able to connect with residents and get to know their needs, problems and expectations for their elected officials. I'm dedicated to supporting my community and listening to the problems of our residents. I look forward to enhancing what our government does to ensure the future of our community. If I am elected, my mission is simple, to support our taxpayers by making informed decisions based on research and data to ensure projects that are approved by the council will have a lasting positive financial impact for our township. I want to ensure that we're investing in parks to provide diversified recreational facilities so that our public green spaces are safe, clean for our seniors, children and residents. I want to improve our infrastructure and invest in our roads so that they are safe for drivers and allow pedestrians to safely enjoy their strolls and exercise routines. And finally, I want to improve our community services to provide a more diversified roster of township events and activities for all ages. Investing in our quality of life and ensuring that all members of our community can enjoy the amenities our township provides is crucial to our mental health. It is up to us to make change. It is up to us to prioritize the important things in life, understand the importance of family, friendship and supporting those that cannot support themselves. Muhammad Gandhi once said, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." I live by that motto. With that said, it is my hope that you place your trust in my hands and I want to work with you to continue putting West Orange first. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank all three organizations who collaborated to unite us here today. I really believe that uniting our community will be and hearing the voices of all of us will determine our success. United we stand, divided we fall. I'm not a politician. I'm a mother, I'm a speech therapist, I'm a businesswoman, an MBA with financial expertise. I consider myself to be an ethical and steady decision maker, which is why I'm running for council. A vote for me is a vote for a common sense approach to municipal governance, efficient and fair-minded use of your tax dollars. I believe money corrupts politics, both nationally and locally. I'm not taking any money because I don't believe it should be necessary in municipal elections. What is, is knocking on every door and explaining to our residents how their tax dollars are spent and how it affects their family. The most pressing issues of our township right now are not the ones that require a PhD to resolve. What they do require is integrity, independent creative problem solvers and ethical leadership. The biggest issue facing West Orange is that too few of our residents vote. And that's why we continue to see areas in need of redevelopment propping up all over town that are leading to our high taxes. I offer the leadership that I think we need. A vote for me is a vote for a common sense approach to municipal government. Oftentimes, the right thing to do is not the easy one. We need leadership that will facilitate difficult decisions, provide transparency and accountability to the taxpayers. I have a track record of doing that, what's right and not what's politically expedient in our schools. As a speech therapist, I have a good understanding of the needs of our community. And as a business person, I've learned to be a creative problem solver, understanding that effective decisions are made when we listen to viewpoints that are different from our own. The most important part of any democracy is a well-informed electorate. So if anyone watching wants to support...
Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
If anyone wants to support me, tell five of your friends to tell five of their friends why your vote in this election matters.
Thank you. Okay, Ron?
I want to thank the West Orange African Heritage Organization, United Asian Voices of West Orange for hosting tonight and Sutota for being the moderator and the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. In my open remarks, I spoke about my experienced leadership and dedication to our community and why I feel I am uniquely qualified for the position with an unmatched track record. I believe that elected officials should be able to roll up your sleeves and get the job done for the people of West Orange. I believe it's about being open, honest and accountable. It's about helping create a township and government that attracts new businesses and keeps them here. It's about developing a vision and atmosphere for bold solutions to old problems. It's for creating a sound financial policy that will keep senior citizens in their homes and our West Orange affordable. And it's about making tough decisions regardless of politics. So tonight I'm before you as an experienced leader, ready to roll up my sleeves to take on our challenges, to work for our West Orange as your elected official and public servant. So tonight I respectfully and humbly ask for your vote and support and those of your families and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give them a nice round of applause. Thank you so much. We'll be back in a few minutes for the mayor.